I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand to the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
The records reflect the members that are present here this evening. Commissioner member should have received the draft minutes of July 25th. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, I'll hear our motion for exception.
Come on.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Delegations and action items for tonight. Darryl, you ready to start off the storage today?
Sure. Well, just as one note, when you all came in, there were three comment letters additionally in front of you on the counter there. And then the Carroll County Planning Commission report from Tiffany. Other than that, yes, we're ready to hear storage today. They were in last month and showing us the concept plan again. So, there's been some activity on that project. So, we're just going to be doing tonight a preliminary site plan presentation. No vote is needed. We just want to, because you got to print the new prints to have a lot more information, we just want to get it out of the office and out into the airwaves. That project is going through the county, circulating through, and it's rolling along pretty good. So, we have a presentation here tonight, I believe.
Darryl is going to give the presentation?
Storage today?
Storage today.
Yeah, and you can all come up. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I didn't say it's hard to hear back there. So, when you're talking, sir, you may want to turn to the side a little bit so I may ask you questions.
Good evening. Bill Brenner with B and R Design Group. I have Eric Heineman here, the contract purchaser for the property. Talked to Darryl, and basically, we're here to just update you. We've submitted the site plan to the town and also to the county. We are still receiving comments from the county. Today, we received another set of comments from the Bureau of Development Review, and basically, they didn't have any comments. They're deferring, most of their review is for the entrance, and they're deferring that to the state of Maryland, and we haven't received anything from the state of Maryland yet. The county Bureau of Development Review has some comments, basically pertaining to adding dimensions. One of the most interesting comments is that this is a self-service storage facility. We don't have an office. They're asking for the ADA parking and a parking space for employee, which we've shown on the plan. I guess we'd like to have a discussion, maybe not at this time, but at some point, opinion of the planning commission, since we don't have any employees on the site. And maybe Eric, if I don't get this right, Eric could step in and correct me. But this facility is basically web-generated. No employees on the site. All the contracts are done over the internet. We'll have a keypad at the gated entrance. So, if you sign the contract, pay your rental facility, we send you a code, and that's how you enter the property. Basically, nobody's on site except, you know, employee might, Eric might come by just to check on the property. We don't have any physical light poles on there, or all the lights are going to be off the building, security type of lights over the units. So, it's really self-sufficient. We'd like to probably eliminate the ADA parking spaces and the employee space, because everybody basically pulls up to their unit, unloads where loads, and then leaves. And just trying to reduce the footprint of the paving area. And we have to, and the health department agrees with this, this facility does not need a water sewer house connection to restrooms, since it's a self-serve storage facility. Carroll County permits thinks we need at least one bathroom on the site, which we'll try to resolve. We'll play referee between them and the health department, see where that goes, and we might need to get the town involved in that. But that's basically where we're at. We're still in the process of collecting comments from the county. Once we have all the comments, and we'll address them and be back before you with the site plan, with the final site plan. So, I'd be glad to take any questions or any concerns you have on the project.
What, any requirements from any of the agents about the ADA for a facility like this?
My understanding is up to 5% of the storage boxes may need to be ADA. I don't know what that means, because you're on a level area. There may be a bump for the slide to the mecan. I've not seen anything from them, but...
To enter the storage, is that what they're looking?
I, we're assuming, right?
Yeah, the ADA is, the regulations are mute on self-service storage facilities. They are grouping the self-serve storage facilities in with hotels and motels, where 5% of the spaces need to be ADA accessible. Not quite sure what that means, because we're just selling an empty space with a roll-up door and that without a threshold. So, we are ADA compatible, but Darryl is correct in that the 5% comes in there. Some of the opinions, some of the state opinions are saying that they're grouping that under the hotel motel accommodations, where 5% of the units have to be ADA.
Okay. Any comments from the commission?
I got a couple of questions, yeah. So, one of the letters that we received was from the water resources technician, and I guess at the top it indicates that they're all advisory comments, and I just was wondering, are you planning on trying to address those, or at least?
Well, we actually have a meeting with MDE this Wednesday at the site to discuss the evolution of that waterway going through the property, because it's, the only reason that waterway is there is due to the existing stormwater, wet stormwater management pond that was designed 20 years ago, you know? So, we'll have a meeting with them, and based on the MDE meeting, we'll get back with the town and let you know what the results are.
Okay, gotcha. The other question I had was, or a couple of questions, on the, all the calculations that somebody did or ran the program. So, we have all these nice calculations, and, but there's no document that draws any conclusions that says, here, this shows we meet requirements or doesn't. So, does that come eventually, or? And then also in here, there's a bunch of crosshatches, so I don't know if it doesn't apply, or if their computer left it blank, or what it means.
Okay, we go back and take, probably the number's a little bit too big for the space. That's where you get the crosshatch.
That's all we got, so that could be. But the one, yeah, the one area, it was a, you know, sheep flu, sheep flu to conservation. So, that's, seems like that'd be an important number to have there, so.
Okay.
And then also in there, when we're describing the adjacent properties, I think you have, you have, let's see, you got, the crane masters and turnball plumbing are swapped, as far as east and west.
Okay.
So...
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, so that...
Appreciate your comments.
Anyway, yeah, yeah, so I just, yeah, I didn't see any conclusions that says, hey, here's my number, and I meet the requirement, because this is the requirement, and here's what it is. So, I don't know if that comes eventually or not.
We can clarify that for you a little bit.
I think Jim can answer that.
If you look at the computations, there's a minimum requirement, and it says whether you meet the storage requirements, so, and it's a summary table, but we'll add that and be a little bit more, more clear.
Thanks.
The city consultant engineer, CDM Smith, will review these computations, as well as the stormwater management plan that's embedded in the drawings as well. So, ultimately, they'll be the ones who determine that it meets all of the city stormwater management code requirements.
Cool. Yep, thank you.
Anyone from the floor have any comments? Thank you. Yeah, okay. Item on the agenda, Belisamo's Restroom?
It's a, it's a rough Belisamo concept presentation. Now, they're going to discuss, there's a lot of chatter out there about what's going on there, and these gents are trying to get things rolling. I wanted to give you all an update as to what's going on. Again, so, they're going to be putting the other, they're gearing up with the engineer that they've chosen to come back to us later with a preliminary concept about what they want to do there. It's nice to talk about what they want to do.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Tifara. My son Frank also. We are in a preliminary stage, because it's taken us a lot longer than we expected. I mean, just to get a set of drawing, it took like two months. So, now, I had it all in my mind, what I wanted to do, and we went to the county, said, oh, no, you need drawing. I say, it's already in my mind, I know what I want, but no, you need drawing. I say, okay, $7,000 down the drain. I say, okay, we'll, we'll get the draw. And of course, now, we still, we applied for the permit, we still waiting for the county, and I'm not sure what we have to do to comply with your requirements. So, we, this thing looks like it's going to take a while, because the last time, the last tour we did was in New Windsor. Honestly, we didn't have all these roadblocks.
It took us about 10 months total, start to finish.
So, but this, this time, it looks like it's going to be a little longer. So, hopefully, we can understand exactly what you guys want, and what Carroll County wants, so we can try to move right along.
Tell us a little bit about what you have in your mind as far as the plans. I mean, it's carryout, I mean, tell a little bit about your...
My son.
We're basically looking to transfer the building into, I mean, it's an existing building, it's pretty. We're going to make it nicer, and we're going to turn it into basically carryout and delivery.
So, that building's going to stay?
Yes.
Because this has been talked about.
I know, I've heard people say. We have no intentions. We have a building in New Windsor we did last.
Okay. I just want to clear that up.
We preserved it. I mean, if anything, it has the old windows that are 150 years old. They're still there. We had to do stuff to modify them.
Sure.
But they're still there. Everything is still there. We painted, you know, we scraped, we painted, we made it, we preserved it.
Yeah, we put a lot of tile work to, so, to keep it for a place to eat, keep it clean.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of us able to go and start to do something.
Yeah, we don't, you know, it's not like we're high-traffic, we're not McDonald's, you know? It's pretty, you know, we don't have a ton of employees, so we hope to not to make a huge impact, you know, as far as disruption.
Totally carryout, no in, in, people sitting inside? Just carryout?
I mean, maybe they, if somebody stands around, we can't kick them out.
No, no, but...
But no, no tables.
I mean, I don't know.
Maybe eventually a couple of tables, but we have, we have two tables in New Windsor, so.
Drawing shows a potential building in the back.
Yes, we would like to introduce that, which we don't want to interfere with the, what we want to do to open the carryout. However, we'd like to propose that we, we would luck, we would like to, as soon as possible, see what we could do with the rest of the land.
Yeah, there's two lots, and we were just planning on like, whether we could put a small building, maybe put like a couple stores, or maybe if, just something, whatever we're allowed to do, you know?
We're not sure.
But, you know, like I said, it's not a big piece of property to start with, so it's obviously not going to be a mall. I mean, we're going to do whatever we're allowed to do.
Okay. Well, Darryl, you can give them the information they need to present, to continue on with the presentation, as far as...
Okay. And I also was talking to Darryl before, and I told him we just, because we didn't 100% understand that we needed a site plan, we weren't 100% sure about that, because we're not disturbing more than 5,000 square feet. So, he asked me a couple different questions, and I just wanted to make sure that we were following what we're supposed to do. So, we contacted BPR on Thursday, and of course, he was not, the guy that we deal with, Randy, he was out of the office until today. So, we haven't been able to go that far yet, but, you know, we're going to do whatever we have to do to follow the rules, you know?
Right.
To make everything good.
We would like to do the most we can get out of that space.
Understand.
And what we're allowed to do. We don't know what we're allowed to do.
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys can help us, telling us what we could do, you know, we could put a strip, or we could put something, or we can use it for ourselves, as, put a dock, and put maybe a few freezers in there, and to keep our food.
It just depends.
It's still open. We, we want to get the building done first, the carryout done.
Yeah.
But at the same time...
That's like a future, but we also don't want it to be a surprise either.
Right, at the same time, we want to start working on the proposed building.
Yeah.
Seems like you need to come to the town and have a meeting, and talk about the options, what's there. I guess our biggest concern is, we don't know what to expect until you present something to us.
We have plans.
We have the plans for the, for the carryout. It's done.
Okay.
If anybody wants to see it, it's here.
We have...
So, Jazz, so now with you having an engineer on board, that's what I was trying to get to you guys six weeks ago, that we need that level of presentation for any decisions to be made. But since you guys were wanting to roll, don't be to get this far, you know, you couldn't get a hold of Randy until today, I guess?
Yeah.
So, things will happen fast on his end. They do understand the requirements for parking, all the small things that people aren't really talking about right now, with the parking, you know, how many employees, you gave me the water allocation, water use for two years, that's important. Those, that information is going to be what's needed to satisfy these gentleman's requirements, as well as the city, with respect to that zoning. So, again, it was just a concept talk.
Yeah, I mean, it would be approximately, I mean, maybe under 10 employees.
So, possibly what might be a good, or a suggestion might be. So, with an engineer on board, possibly you all go over the plans with the engineer, figure out a, what are the important points that you'd like to share at a future, maybe September Planning Commission, so that you could inform us, and then inform those people who come here who are curious. And I hear that the building that already exists is going to be preserved. That is what that plan addresses, because the proposed building out back is not on the table right now, and you're focusing on keeping the building that is on Main Street, and that's going to be your carryout service. So, then, like Mr. Hale said, address number of employees, the parking, the layout, the plan, and rehearse and go through what exactly are the aspects that you want to share, and maybe we can see that a month from now.
Yeah. How you're loading, you're loading, how your, how your product is coming in, I mean, taking consideration, you've got that small alley there.
So, ingress and egress of deliveries.
Stuff like...
We have, we have two entrance, we have an entrance and an exit. There, there is the alley, but we also have driveway. So, because I've heard this once before, there is an in, and I mean, technically, there is an out. So, as far as that goes, I mean, we don't need the alley.
Okay.
Well, we have a box truck, and we get it delivered twice a week roughly.
Yeah, and there's...
So, and it's only like an hour, half hour, maybe. That's it.
Yeah.
And we got our, we're going to have our freezers in there, refrigeration, and that's all we need.
Yeah, I mean, we basically, the building will be a kitchen. More than anything, it'll be a kitchen.
Right, we might get a bread guy, bring the bread.
Yeah, we don't even get a lot delivered.
We understand what you're, what you're trying to get, bring across to us. Yep.
So, tonight is the concept plan?
No, no. Tonight is just a presentation. Right, there is no, there is no...
Also, we've got to work on, this, this drawing shows what to do inside. We have to solve...
Yeah, this is the blueprint.
Right, we have to solve what to do outside of the, of the existing building.
Understand.
So, we're going to get Randy aboard and figure out that part first.
Okay.
But at the same time, as soon as we get that straight, we would like to start working in the back.
Okay.
If, if we can.
All right.
I just had a question about the parking for the, for the pizza place here, the carryout. So, I know there's, you come in the driveway and, or the Merwin Drive and turn into your parking lot. Were you planning coming in off the Main Street also, or you're going to go down the alley and then turn into the parking lot, or?
Honestly, we were planning on nothing to do with the alley.
So, where is the entrance?
So, you would, you would come right off of Baltimore Street, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That is the alley, right?
Well, it's, there's an alley, and then there's a driveway that's ours.
Off the alley.
We assume that the driveway would be our entrance, because it is our driveway, but we figured we would incorporate, there's a lot of grass there, we figure we could kind of turn that into the parking lot.
If I can, I want all the grass out of there.
Okay.
And...
Well, that way, more, there's more parking and more room to maneuver.
Put parking, and I also like to put a ramp from the sidewalk, straight into the building. That, that is my way to deal with the...
ADA.
Well, it's ADA, but it's also, it's kind of a mess right now.
Okay.
The way it is right now, it's a mess.
I got to figure out that from the sidewalk, I can go straight to, into the door.
So, there's no stop.
And I have enough slope to accommodate the wheelchair. That's without any engineers.
Safely, safely.
That is my favorite, because you've got like an inch per foot, and I got enough room to do it.
Right, well, working with your engineer will handle all that. Also, if you're planning on putting a sign up, make sure that's part of this too, so you don't have to come back before us again with an application for a sign.
Okay.
So, try to incorporate that all into one.
Just a question, is it better to put the sign on the roof, or is it better to put the sign on the street? For you guys, what do you like better?
We generally don't do roof-mounted signs.
Pardon me?
Roof-mounted signs are prohibited, so, yeah.
Okay.
There, probably are a few older ones scattered around town, but the current code is supposed to be either on the wall of the building or freestanding.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, then maybe we see you back next month. Was there any comments from the floor on? Okay.
I'd like to offer a couple, just kind of summary comments if I could. So, the sketch that Darryl received gives the appearance that basically the whole site that has the house on it is going to be paved. So, going by the dimensions of that, it probably would be exceeding the threshold for stormwater management and things like that. And I believe the curb cut onto East Baltimore Street is at the point where the, the rear lot adjoins the street. So, it looks like the curb cut is actually on the lot that goes to the proposed building in the rear, not for the existing house. So, there's two lots, I think, and the rear is kind of L-shaped, and that curb cut is for the rear lot. So, if you're planning on utilizing that for the carryout portion, then we're crossing the lot line also. So, there's a lot that really needs to be kind of worked out, you know? So, we, we have all those details, and, you know, parking, parking spaces have a specific size that they have to be, and the drive aisles have to be a certain width and everything for safety. So, that, that's the kind of detail that we don't have at this point. So, there's, there's kind of some confusion as to like where, you know, what's going to be on what lot, and what's happening when, so we just need to figure all that out before these guys can approve anything.
After we talk to Randy, we would like to use the entrance or exit.
Right.
There is a door right now for the lot. We would like to use it for the store also, since we don't want...
Okay, right.
So, so this way, we will do it now, if we can.
Okay, right.
Question from Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, a very quick question.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Chris Tillman, Tony Towne Chamber of Commerce. We do have, you know, one question. You talked about preserving the building. Have you accounted for parking? I mean, is it your intention to take the stone building down when you build the buildings in the back, or are you going to maintain both buildings?
We're going to keep the old building.
Okay.
That's the restaurant.
And then we'll, whatever we can put back here, as big as we can.
Whatever they'll allow.
Whatever we allow, we'd like to put it in. But for the time being, we would like to take this driveway that goes to the back lot and incorporate it with the store, so we have a more entrance, exit. Make it easier to go in and out.
Okay.
So, this part, let's say up to here, will be done, if possible, now. The rest, it's future. Could be one year, could be 20 years, I don't know, if I'm still here. My son got to take care of it.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you. Yep. Anything else?
Hi, I'm Tara Stancek. I just wanted to say, when you're talking with your engineers...
Yes.
This is just a suggestion, it's not, I'm not saying you have to, but I think this is a residence home that's next door to you?
Yes.
I don't know if you guys, I know like, I see that's like your driveway area, and then you have your parking, but I don't know if there's anything you can do to try to have some like barrier, like a fence, or maybe like some shrubbery or something, just to block that view from them. But it's just a, it's just a suggestion to, you know, when you're going over stuff.
Where would you put that?
I have no idea. I'm not, if I was an engineer, I'd, yeah, I don't know. It's true.
What's the reason you're asking this question?
Suggesting? Oh, because just trying to be nice to the neighbor, that's all.
Like, I mean, I mean...
We can talk to the neighbor and see.
We, we're always good neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, that's all. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope to see you next month.
Thank you.
I will talk to Tara, and I mean...
Okay. Randy?
Randy, and we'll see what we can come up with.
All right, thank you. You ready, Darryl?
That's just our opportunity to give you updates on everything.
Next item, Tony Towne Crossing, approval for easement.
Yeah, so, I think this is the last item of need for Tony Towne Crossing. When the streetlights were put in there, they were just off by a scooch. There's, there's an easement being redrawn that will make that real and right, and I believe that's it.
On that easement plat, you'll see there are parcels that were dedicated to state highway and, and the city along the road frontage, and unfortunately, the streetlights are just past that line. And since the details with the streetlights are on a different set of drawings than the plat drawing itself, we didn't realize that small discrepancy between the two sheets. So, the easement is just, the city will be maintaining those streetlights that are along the road frontage, and Tony Towne Crossing maintains the ones that are interior on the site. So, this easement gives our Public Works Department the right to go on that part of the property and maintain those lights as we need to. So, just kind of... So, just kind of a housekeeping item, really. But it does result in a plat that'll get recorded that Chairman Parker will sign. So, whenever we ask Mr. Parker to sign something, we always wanna have a commission vote in the minutes before we ask him. So, that's what this is about.
So is the easement, um, like a designation merely in term, or are we purchasing a small bit of land from the crossing?
The land will still belong to Tony Town Crossing. The easement just gives us the right to go on that 10-foot wide strip to maintain the streetlights.
If we have to dig it up or something for repairs. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for approval for the easement.
Motion of approval for the easement.
Okay, that's, uh, Tony Crossing, seconded by Bradley. Any further discussion? Any comments from the floor? All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Carrie. Thank you, fellas. Okay. Economic Development and Planning Presentation. Thank you. Jay.
Yesterday was the day that the computer maybe reset my password, so I was nervous I was going to mess it up in front of you. There is my presentation. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, I am Jay Nishi, I'm the Economic Development Director for the city. I wanna thank you all for having me, as well as my colleagues on the staff. Do you have it in front of you?
Not yet, but it's coming, I hope.
I see the first slide, yes.
City of Tony Town Planning Commission.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay. So people think of economic development a lot of different ways. Some people think it's about networking events, or planning events in the park. But it's helpful, as government officials, for you and me to think of economic development as the things that a government, or a nonprofit, or a utility, uh, does to create new wealth. Uh, and there are two ways that economic development creates new wealth. Creates jobs, and it increases the value of property. So it's pretty obvious that creating jobs creates wealth, because people are doing new jobs and getting paid for it. The other way is a little more complicated and typically takes longer. The end result of increasing the value of property, though, is that the people who own the property have a greater personal wealth after economic development activities than they did before, and they didn't have to do any work themselves to earn that greater wealth. So we'll do the straightforward one first. Uh, all the news everywhere talks about the Great Resignation, and the Silver Tsunami, and the reduced labor force participation, and things like that. So during a labor shortage, it might seem weird to talk about job creation, but it's an essential part of economic development. So we still need to discuss why it's good for Tony Town. First, I wanna be clear that the jobs that we want are good-paying and family-sustaining. Walmart, McDonald's are at the top of the list of companies whose employees earn so little that they collect food stamps and other government assistance. I believe that an honest day's work is an honest day's work, and you're never gonna hear me talking down about any American worker. But the truth is that those aren't the sort of jobs that help people to buy a home and grow their wealth, or to save and invest their money. So when I talk about the benefits of job creation, I'm talking about jobs at places like Avapco, Flowserve, Cureleaf, Tony Stare, Mason Dixon Napa Auto Parts, uh, Crane Masters, Held Bridal Bounds, those places. So when the city helps or encourages the creation of these jobs, we hopefully make jobs for our own residents who will be able to both live and work here. And creating jobs here can have a positive benefit to the city's bottom line, too. Each Maryland county is required by the state to collect an income tax, and part of that's paid to the municipality where you live, if you live in a town or city. When we create these jobs and keep the workers living inside the city limits, we receive more income tax revenue. Uh, more income tax revenue, which is mandated by the state, means that we're less reliant on property taxes. So to summarize, economic development that creates good-paying jobs, combined with housing and zoning policy that enables Tony Town workers to live in Tony Town, results in less dependence on the property tax. Wait, uh-oh, I've messed up the slides, wasn't my password that got me at all. Uh, for the more complicated part, one of the primary reasons that communities engage in economic development is to increase the tax base. And that phrase really means to increase property values, which will in return result in more property tax collected. So the first way that economic development increases property values comes when a new business takes a plot of land that's greenfield or brownfield and develops it. This also happens when a vacant building is redeveloped, the way that one York Street is currently being. So an empty field or an unused building has a relatively low value as assessed by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. When something's built on a vacant lot, or in an unused building, its value increases. That's pretty straightforward. But in economic development terms, it only applies to commercial land. The other way that economic development increases property values is by making housing more desirable. In a minute, I'll discuss why it's more desirable to live in a place with robust economic development occurring. But in contrast to the increasing the value of commercial land, this kind of economic development outcome benefits homeowners. So like many local governments, the city's largest source of revenue is property taxes. When the value of commercial property increases because of new development or redevelopment, the city collects more tax revenue. You'll hear some people say that residential development increases the city's tax base, and that's absolutely true. Residential units also need the full array of city services, including police services, waste removal, snow plowing, parks and rec, things like that. Things which cost the city money. Commercial development, on the other hand, doesn't use city services on the same level. There's no adequate facilities expectation that will hire additional police officers based on more businesses. Commercial operators are responsible for paying for their own garbage hauling. The business that owns a parking lot is responsible for plowing it. These are just the most obvious examples of how economic development brings in more property tax revenue than it costs in services. So Tony Town is often called a bedroom community, because it's more affordable than the places many of our residents work. One of the reasons that it's more affordable is because it's more difficult here to access businesses. And we should think about two different kinds of businesses right now. There are businesses that employ people, and there are businesses that serve residents. When I say that it's more difficult to access businesses, I mean businesses that serve residents. Not having those businesses in Tony Town makes it less convenient to live here, and consequently more affordable. When we increase the number or size of employers in Tony Town, we create more demand for homes here. All you have to do is drive east towards Baltimore County in the morning, or west back to Tony Town in the evening, and it's clear that working closer to Tony Town would be more desirable from a commuter's standpoint. The presence of employers here increases housing demand, thereby increasing value. An increase in population and in housing values leads to an increase in the businesses that serve residents. Uh, we're talking about Chick-fil-A, a dry cleaner, a rec center like Copper Mine Four Seasons, a movie theater, a bookstore, the type of businesses that people constantly ask us for on Facebook. So when many Tony Town folks think of economic development, they think about getting the businesses that provide services to residents. Chick-fil-A, Panera, Target, Kohl's, KFC, and I hear Long John Silver more than you might think. Uh, people tell me that they want a hardware store here. When I first got here 18 months ago, so many people told me the sentence, "You can't even buy a nail in Tony Town", that I thought everybody had gotten together and agreed to use that sentence. Speaking of nails, I also hear that we need a nail salon. Uh, for most retail businesses, there are 15 or more different bills that come in, and there's only one source of revenue. When you go to Cinco de Mayo, for instance, you buy food and drink, and that money has to pay for the propane they use to cook, the cleaning supplies for tables, floors, bathrooms, and dishes, the cable TV that they show at the bar, the rights to the music they play, payroll, payroll taxes, unemployment insurance, social security, the cost of having all of that figured out weekly. That money has to pay for the health department inspections that they get, the air conditioning in the summer, the heat in the winter, new menus to be printed when the old ones are dirty or damaged. That money has to pay for silverware, plates, napkins, and straws, and all of those expenses are before they buy the food and the beverage that they're selling to you. When someone tells me they want a chain restaurant, I often wanna explain to them that corporations have very advanced formulas to decide where they open. Chick-fil-A knows how many chicken sandwiches it has to sell to meet all those expenses and still turn a profit for the owners. Chick-fil-A also knows how many people need to live in a 1, 2, and 5-mile radius of their restaurant in order to sell that many sandwiches. It knows what the average household income must be. You can bet that it takes fewer houses in Potomac, Maryland to support a Chick-fil-A than it does in Tony Town. You, as the Planning Commission, have a very specific role to play when it comes to Tony Town getting a blank, like it shows at the top of the slide. So through the Maryland Economic Development Association, we're fortunate to have a 2019 copy of Panera Bread's site selection criteria. Uh, I don't know how big that is and how easy it is for you to see, I tried to make it bigger and it just didn't work. But I can tell you a little bit about what it says. As of Census Day, April 1, 2020, we had 7,234 residents. Panera wants that number to be 10,000 people within one mile of their store, and 30,000 people within two miles. Our daytime population of 21,842 people, which includes everybody who comes here to work, that number is, takes into account seven miles from Tony Town. So Panera wants 20,000 or more within two miles. There's good news, our median household income of $73,649 is above Panera's target of $50,000, but it's not enough above it to make up for the lack of households. Our cost of living is a little high, our unemployment rate's a little low, and that bottom number there on the Panera slide, that says they want 25,000 daily vehicle trips past their location. There's not a single place in Tony Town that gets more than 10,000 vehicle trips a day right now. Here's some more of what Panera wants, uh, before they'll reopen a location. Uh, I wanna point out that they want big-box retail anchors. Panera only wants to come if they're coming along with a Kohl's, or a Target, um, a Home Depot, something like that. They want $30,000 in rent credit if the space they're looking at isn't already ADA compliant with restrooms. They want a drive-through, if possible, a location that has weeknight and weekend activity, and, this part kills me, they want their rent to start four months after they have their premises and all their permits. So in short, right now, Tony Town can't compete for the food and retail businesses that our residents say they want, because we don't have the population to support these businesses, and it's questionable whether our landlords are prepared to host them. Since we can't support well-known names, we end up with what people call mom-and-pop stores. Some of them are very successful. Bess and Vens has been here for 40 years. Lois has been making cakes, and Joe's been making paninis across the street for years. I eat far too many of Lois's pastries. The Ballingers provide detailed knowledge and comprehensive service over at the gun store. Uh, so some of the mom-and-pops do fine and thrive, but many more of them discover that they're under-capitalized and they haven't included all their expenses in their business plan. Or to put it another way, the mom-and-pops find out that they need the same population to support them that the big chains know that they need. So where do we go from here? I said that you, as the Planning Commission, have a specific role to play when it comes to Tony Town getting a blank, whether that's a restaurant, or a nail salon, or a hardware store. As the Planning Commission, your role is to plan where those desired businesses will go, how they will look, and where we can host enough residents to support them. Sometimes I hear or read that Tony Town should focus on building more commercial space instead of, or before, we build more residential units. The truth is that retail and food service businesses follow customers. Unless and until Tony Town has enough customers, national brands simply won't come, and many mom-and-pops will fail. Businesses thrive on predictability, that's one reason that the stock market has been so volatile lately. Unpredictability with continuing supply chain problems, COVID shutdowns in China, a continued increase in housing prices, you and his demand drops. All those things result in people and businesses that are hesitant to invest and commit. I urge you, as the Planning Commission, to provide predictability and consistency to the city. As you consider the urban mix zone that was envisioned more than 10 years ago, and as the comprehensive plan review goes forward, I hope you commit to providing a culture that will allow economic development to thrive to the benefit of the city and its current and future residents. My mouth is so dry right now. That's what I've got for you. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Hettis, well presented. So, basically what you're saying is, we need more people?
If we want businesses.
Or we need a destination store?
Absolutely.
People need a reason to come to that particular store.
If, if we want those stores.
If we want those stores.
It's legitimate to decide that we're happy with what we have now, if we are. But if we're not, um, then I think that we need to, to be realistic about what it will take to get what we do want.
So if we're happy with what we have now, where do I get my nail?
Uh, I expect that the plumery might have your nail, actually. But.
Okay, comments?
Well, well done.
Thank you.
That was a lot of good, that was, that was well presented.
Thanks. I can send it along to, if you would like, with the notes that I read.
Please, yes, please come to the.
I'm Jim Thomas. I think what Jay presented is a particular paradigm for community development. And if you look at some of the issues, for example, of bringing in box stores that he listed there as, you know, one way to go, the, the side effect of that, as you know, most of those stores will be located on the periphery of the town, right? So already with a town that's struggling in terms of building the downtown, you're gonna pull business further away from the core of the town, which is sort of mixed. And I understand the issues of this kind of field of dreams, you know, build it and they will come, but I think it's a delicate balance. There are other models of community building that really look at how you get the downtown vital first in terms of what you all can be responsible for, in terms of how you steer landlords to provide businesses on the first floor. How you get, uh, landlords of buildings now to respond to empty buildings that have been vacant for a long time. So there's a model that really focuses on a, a whole different perspective, um, that I think this can be a part of, but I don't think this is the whole picture, and it's really, really complicated. Other thing I've noticed from talking to people in the last few months is that if you look at this relationship between housing, um, drive-time, uh, housing cost, that I think that even when new businesses come to da, come to town, what you'll see is that the competition for those jobs is a regional question. It may or may not provide jobs for people in Tony Town. Because of that, the housing market's varying, so what, the, the cost of housing varies so widely in this region. You, you know as well as I do, people are driving an hour, an hour and a half, just because of the lower housing cost here. So, I think while bringing businesses here will change some of that, I'm not sure, based on regional considerations, how much that's really gonna affect the dynamic that Jay speaks about. Will have some, but I think those numbers are probably available, really, to check out before you commit to this plan of box stores, um, building on the periphery at the stake of downtown. So, I'm very interested in, in community development, community development models, which look at the restoration and the vitality of the town first, getting that very, very strong, and then look towards this periphery building so that you don't suck the life out of the town right from the beginning in terms of box stores. Other thing I would question is, is the tax, um, question about the contribution of box stores to tax revenue, and based on some of the things that Panera Bread is requesting in terms of breaks from income-revenue sources for the town. I know if you look at a lot of urban research now, particularly through, I really admire Strong Towns, a nonprofit that has done a lot of urban research, the long-term cost of these box stores, sometimes again, just like residential development, the cost of that add strips the revenue they provide. And when you talk about the real wealth in the town that Jay is speaking about, it's downtown. Both in providing infrastructure to the periphery, and looking at the cost of providing those things, again, to these box stores, and doing your math and analysis to see what is the real return of these stores when you make these commitments to peripheral building and box stores versus other ways that you can support entrepreneurs and the mom-and-pop businesses that he speaks about. Okay, so thank you very much.
I want to assure you, Mr. Chairman, I will reach out to Jim tomorrow and find a way to bring his out-of-town business downtown where he can support us to.
There you go, thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Chris Tillman, again, uh, speaking for Georgia's On York, and also for the Tony Town Chamber of Commerce. You know, and, and I enjoyed Jay's presentation, and while I certainly agree that, uh, you know, we should be looking for those higher-paying jobs in ways that we can create higher-paying jobs here in town, not all the jobs that we're gonna be creating in an, in this kind of environment are going to be high-paying jobs. And in fact, actually, it's gonna be quite the opposite at the beginning of this process, because, uh, you know, i- in, in order to, the, the, the big box stores aren't coming here, they, they just are not. They're, they already exist in places around us within 10 miles, uh, so they're just not, they're not going to be here. So, we, in order to. So we, in order to provide the services that people are looking for, we need to get this at, at a smaller level. We need to get it at the mom and pop level. Mom and pop stores aren't going to be paying, uh, big money for employees. But, you know, Jim made, made the, the, the good point about the community redevelopment first, and that's really where we need to, to look at. You know, is redeveloping, uh, the downtown, uh, and, and creating that vibrancy, uh, that we really, really need. And the way that that happens is to, is to get better financed and better, um, equipped businesses, the people who are better equipped to, to open businesses and do business. And that's, you know, that, that's where we really need to be focusing. You know, one of the things that people talk about, and, and we've had discussion about this at the meeting that happened over at the Ryan Dollar Carriage House, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, you know, how do we get people to come to town? Well, people come to town now. You just don't know it. Two to 300 people come into Tawny Town every weekend. And they go onto the campus at, uh, over at Antrim, or they come to our place and they go off to their wedding, they come back and they go home because there isn't anything for them to do here. High paying jobs, people, you know, the folks at Evapco and at Flowserve have told us directly that they can't keep engineers because they come out here and they, 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 they move out here, they rent a place for a while, and they find that there's so little to do here, the place isn't interesting enough for them to stay. And so they have trouble with retention of employees in, in high paying jobs, uh, to, to keep them around here. So it's the vibrancy of downtown that really is going to make the difference. I, I don't think, you know, I agree with Jim in that the, the development isn't going to happen on the periphery and it can't happen on the periphery. Because there's not, there isn't the, the need for that kind of place. You know, is there a need for a hardware store? Well, you know, pretty much anything you need at a hardware store, you can either get it at Plumery or you can get it over at the Southern States, but nobody in town knows that. And so there, there is, there is communications issues also. You know, I've been, I've spent the last five years of my life fighting the parking myth here in town. You know, everyone's, oh, there's no place to park in Tawny Town. Well, there are 72 metered spaces right outside the door here. If you go up and down, uh, Baltimore Street and either way on York and Frederick, uh, and you don't have to go very far, there are 72 metered spaces. Within a block, there are nearly 100 un-metered spaces in public lots. You know, parking, the, the, the parking thing is a myth, but we don't do enough. We as a business community, we as the, uh, the, the city, you know, city government don't do enough to, to fight that myth. And, you know, that's what, when we talked, when I talked to people about bringing a business to Tawny Town, well, there's no place to park. It's the first thing out of their mouth. So until we defeat those myth, that myth, and oh, Tawny Town's hard to deal with. You know, I don't think you're hard to deal with, I didn't have any trouble. You know, but you have rules and it's a matter of following those rules. And in regards to that, one of the other things that I will bring up very quickly, uh, and then I'll hop off my soapbox, is regarding the EDU. You know, that is a major impediment to businesses, to small businesses, to the kinds of businesses that, that Jim and I are talking about, about trying to redevelop the downtown. You know, if you have to add $13,000 into your, into your budgeting for redeveloping an existing, uh, existing space and, you know, an existing building here in town, that may kick you out of, out of, you know, out of worrying. It almost stopped us. So, um, you know, at Georgia's On York. So those are things that you need to look at and, and, you know, also, you know, what else is out there? What kind of help is out there? Jay does a great job in terms of looking for, uh, grants and, and what can be done and how we can assist, um, you know, the local businesses, but we just, we need to do more and we need to do more about getting that message out to the business community. So with that, I am done. Thank you.
You said there was, what, 300 people go through here in a weekend downtown?
Yes, sir.
How many stores that we have open are open on weekends?
Very few. We have very few stores open to start with, so.
So what can we do?
Well, it's a chicken and egg thing. And, and, and you're right, it's, it's tough because how do you, uh, you know, how do you, how do you draw those people out of there? Well, you gotta have something for you to do. Well, people go, well, there's nobody out here, so why should I bring something to do here? There are, there are a few things and we can get better at, at messaging the things that we do have. Uh, and I think we need to get better at that. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of people coming to weddings are, are younger people who would love to go over to Laughing Golf and if they knew about it. You know, and so that's, uh, that's a really, you know, how do we get that messaging over to those folks? Uh, they have 40 rooms at Antrim. They're booked all weekend. That's 120 people right there that are staying the weekend. Right? You know, and plus there, there are people that come to the wedding that, that just go home. You know, there are two wedding destinations here in town, two high-end wedding destinations here in town, and another one coming online. So there is a market there and the market is going to be coming here every weekend. So, you know, how do we, how do we approach that? How do we get that messaging out to potential business owners? How do we get that messaging out from, from the, from the businesses that are in town to those, uh, to those venues? You know, and it's not only the ones that are right here in town, those are just three that would be in town. You also have the links at Gettysburg, you have, uh, Bowling Brook. You know, there are other large and, and, you know, uh, active wedding venues within 10 minutes of here. You know, and, and maybe that's a, uh, someplace where we ought to be focusing some of our, our marketing and, and, you know, and our economic development efforts. Services for, not for people who need, you know, like tuxes and stuff like that, because when they come to a wedding, they already have that. But things for people to do when they get here. So, uh, that, you know, like I said, I'll, I'll jump back off my soapbox, but those are things to think about and things that I don't think we have thought about that I think we need to wrap ourselves around a little bit.
Thank you.
So just to kind of round things out a little bit, uh, there were some comments about the, the downtown and not, you know, the focus on the periphery. And, um, Meech didn't touch specifically on this, but, um, he's been working to rekindle our Main Street program. We have, the mayor and council did pass, um, bylaws to reestablish a Main Street Board of Directors. And, um, Meech has been working on recruiting, uh, folks to serve on that board. Hopefully we'll have some appointments made in the not-too-distant future and get that effort, um, started back up again. So one of the, um, focuses of that group is, um, there's an economic restructuring aspect where the, this committee or this group within Main Street, they're tasked with basically flipping the script so that here in Tawny Town right now, a landlord can get greater benefit by renting apartment space because they have that space filled consistently. Um, and they can charge more, um, per square foot for apartments than they can for ground floor commercial space. So part of the role of this economic restructuring group is to work on this kind of long-term shift where it makes sense for a landlord to convert ground floor space to a commercial use instead of residential. But right now, the, the economy of it, they will lose money. And, you know, when we see the businesses turnover and that storefront vacant, well, that apartment, you know, an apartment probably wouldn't be vacant for five months at a time. So the landlord is losing revenue with a vacant storefront while they could be making money renting an apartment. So if you look at the economy of it, it makes sense for what, you know, we see landlords doing. I mean, it's a good business case. So part of the long-range strategy is to get to the point where it makes sense to put that ground floor into commercial use instead of residential. So that's a, uh, an effort the city is, is, uh, getting ready to pick back up. So the focus isn't, I didn't want to let you guys leave here thinking the focus was on, you know, attracting big box retail and, and putting everything out in the general business district. So, um, you know, again, certainly the higher paying jobs at places like Evapco and, and Flowserve are great and, you know, those people may have the discretionary income to support the local businesses. But also acknowledging, uh, Mr. Tillman's comments that some of those mom pop jobs or companies are not going to pay high wages. You know, and they're not, they're not renting those expensive spaces that a Panera or, um, you know, a national chain is going to. Those people need to leave, live someplace too. And when our zoning map gives us the opportunity to build nothing but $400,000 single-family houses on quarter acre lots, we don't offer places for those employees who are going to work at the mom and pops to live. So it's, this is all the kind of stuff that needs to be meshed into our comprehensive plan. And these are the kind of discussions we really need to be having. So, um, I want to thank everybody for their input and, and comments tonight. I think this was a very healthy conversation to have, but it's really just the tip of the iceberg.
So some of the old thoughts back years ago. So what would happen if we would go with more R20,000s or 10,000s and keep some of those engineers here and it went to nice home on a nice big sized lot? That was the thought back when we were doing Mead Crossing. At the very beginning.
Yeah, I mean, and, and not that there isn't a market for that, um, but it's, if, uh, Mr. Thomas mentioned the, the Strong Towns nonprofit and, um, you know, they, they do this exercise basically, and, and I've done a very low-tech version of it here, where you can look at, uh, you know, your average suburban community and look at the cost of maintaining the infrastructure compared to the revenue that generates. And what, what those studies seem to prove over and over again is that the, the downtowns of cities and towns tends to be the most productive, you know, return on investment that, that you see throughout the city. And oftentimes those are the areas that are ignored, um, and not maintained, uh, because they're old or, you know, they fall into disrepair or, you know, certain elements may move in and, you know, and then there's disinvestment in it. And yet these are the areas that have the most economic potential for the city. So it's, um, it's a very interesting, uh, way to look at things. But, you know, having done the math, just for an area that we're getting ready to do our, our Roberts Mill Run, or Roberts Mill Road project, it would take between 30 and 40 years of real estate revenue for all the houses on that segment of road that we're going to rebuild to pay for the cost to rebuild that road. And that's assuming that that money wouldn't be spent for, you know, police protection, general governmental services and things like that. So that single-family, you know, quarter acre lot development that we make it easy to do may not be the most beneficial for the city in the long run. But people love it. People also love cul-de-sacs, but, so it's easy to sell. But is it the best thing for the city long-term? So we need to consider those things, and I think oftentimes we focus on the short term of, you know, it's going to be this many more, you know, real estate tax dollars, this many more, you know, dollars for, uh, income tax revenue. And we don't look at what's it going to cost us to redo the water and sewer line 30 years from now? Because we're going to, the builder builds at once and we maintain it forever. So, you know, those things we need to, we need to think about that. And density plays a role in that. You know, the lower density, we've got more linear footage of infrastructure to maintain, you know, for that R20,000 dollar house or that R20,000 acre, you know, house. Now that may be a half million dollar house, but we're only getting, you know, a third as many of them. So it's, all this stuff kind of plays into, you know, what we want to look like in the next 10 years as we get into our plan update. So it's a lot, a lot to think about, but it all connects.
Yeah, I just wanted to add some things. So, uh, you know, I've, I've heard from a lot of people that businesses can't strive here or can't thrive here in, uh, Tawny Town and it's really incorrect. You know, there's, what was it, 7,400 people, as I think the slideshow showed, with a median income of 73,000? That's a lot of money that could go to small businesses. And here's the thing, you know, I was talking with somebody out in Meads Crossing today and, uh, the peop, the people out there, just about everybody out there, they come to Tawny Town to sleep. That is what they come to Tawny Town for. They come home to sleep. They don't shop at the businesses. They, really the only thing they care about here in Tawny Town, and this is, nothing against them, this is just something as, this is where they live. They care about the schools and they care about coming home to sleep. And, you know, I, I was talking with them about ways that we can fix that, getting them involved in the community. And part of it is finding small businesses that are, that people want, you know what I mean? I'm not going to rip on, uh, boutiques, for instance, but when you have three, four boutiques on Main Street, you know what I mean? How many boutiques does a small town need? The, the thing is, is that not everybody's going to be successful in business, especially in small business. But we gotta find businesses that are looking to innovate that, that are looking to be innovative here in Tawny Town. You know, over at Laughing Coffin, again, we have 20, 40 kids in there on a daily average. I've, I wish I could get that over to Main Street because it's foot traffic. I'm not sure if you've ever been by, but there's 10, 15, 20 bikes outside of our building. There's adults that walk there, there's kids that walk there. And, you know, I've talked about maybe trying to get the retail section over there, but we don't even have a sign on Main Street, you know what I mean? This is people that have found out about us through social media and just about the work that we've done around town, the charitable events and stuff like that. And I think that's part of what some of the small businesses are missing is being a small business in a small town isn't about just opening up, it's about giving back to the town, showing ways that you can be charitable, showing ways to just get your name out there. And, uh, I don't know, it's, it's a really weird aspect that we have a town with so many people and such a large median income, but small businesses can't thrive here. I've been to smaller towns, I've lived in smaller towns and they have more than Tawny Town. So it's, it's just, it's a really weird thing because we don't necessarily need box stores. This town can be successful without box stores. It just needs businesses that reach the people that people want to venture out to. And again, Meads Crossing, we have people that come in from Meads Crossing, it's because it's a unique business, it's something people want to go to. So we don't, we don't necessarily need Panera Bread and stuff like that, we just need small businesses that reach the people that people want to go to. And, uh, I think that's something that, and it isn't, Tawny Town's problem per se, sometimes it's the business owners that are just like, I want to start this business. And they don't really research as much as they should or think about the prospects of it all, but I don't know, I just wanted to comment that it is a really weird perspective that small businesses can't thrive in a town with a 73,000 median income and 7,400 people. It's very weird. I think it just needs a lot more community outreach. And I think, um, not to harp on the town too much, but need to work with the businesses that are here. So.
Jim, you had.
Just real quick, I was on your, your, your town about the larger lots. I don't know if you know, in, in your own comprehensive plan, one of the recommendations made in the 2010 version was that you use your larger lots on the edge of your growth boundaries to provide a transition to the farmland. So now if you look at Meads Crossing, for example, they push the highest density houses to the outside borders. So there's a way, not necessarily to provide four acre lots there, but to decrease the density in a staged way. So one, it starts to honor the neighbors outside your growth boundary as well as perhaps as you're suggesting, maybe a little higher income houses on that outside edge that serves two purposes, one, with people that can afford it, but also to really respect the neighbors that live outside the town. And that's already in your comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
As a recommendation.
All right, almost forgot where we're at. Any other comments? In there on, uh, economic, economic development? Okay, again, thanks, Jay. Very fine presentation. I expect your doors to be open eight hours a day?
What's that?
I expect your doors to be open eight hours a day for business? Ordinance and agree, agreements for review? I don't see any. Daryl, your, uh, your report?
So just, you know, I, I like to do it as we go through. But, um, the city staff is working on the draft for the ground solar panel ordinances and, um, we hope to have some information soon, um, which we'll present, um, to you all with, and suggestions to go to the mayor and council at some point. Just some more F P Duffy, uh, comment letters, as well as Ballinger Phase One, eight comment letters. So things are rolling through there, it just seems like it's, it's almost a new snag every, um, um, tree around the corner. But it's getting there. around the corner, but it's getting there. We're hoping, I believe the rate is still hoping to break ground sometime late this year. We can't do the pours, we can't do the trails until spring mild weather, way past the thaw, that type of thing. And then F.P. Duffy, they hope to have their grading permit any day now, and get rolling on that. I think the building's being, the owner told me that he was hoping to receive the building in August, and the machine in September. And again, this building is to house one machine, so it's important that it gets up there soon. So other than that, in my report, that's all I have.
Okay, you want to move on to the active rest of those?
Yeah, so we've discussed the Ballinger Phase One and Storage today, inactive subdivisions. I don't have anything further to report. We discussed the construction phase projects, Tannery, I'm sorry, Tawnytown Crossing, I have nothing else in the, we just spoke about F.P. Duffy, and I have nothing else in active construction projects.
I think you said last month that the Duffy project was getting ready to break ground out there?
Yeah, it's, I mean, they're waiting for something on their grading permit, and I'm not quite sure I understand what that is.
All right. Legal update, Jay?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Nothing specific tonight. We are closing out all of those projects that Daryl went through with public works agreements to get them all in place. You'll see at the council meeting, there's some releases of some letters of credit. So we have a lot of projects that are getting towards the end, and that's kind of where we are. And I guess what later tonight, you're going to talk about how to get some project moving forward with some new zoning regulations. So that's been the bulk of what's going on related to you this past month.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments to Jay? Thanks, Jay. County update, Tiffany?
Good evening, everyone. Tiffany Fausset, Department of Planning for Carroll County. Few updates from us this month. For the comprehensive rezoning, for the ag, for the changes to the ag and conservation zoning regulations that have been working first with the work group at the beginning of this year, then to the planning commission in the spring, and now they are being reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners in August, and it'll soon be opening to the public, too. For the 2022 Spring Amendment to the 2019 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan, that has been forwarded to M.D.E. for final approval on August 12th. For the Fall Amendment to the plan, applications are currently being accepted in August with the deadline of the 1st of September. Planning has begun process for the triennial update, and municipalities' water and sewer chapters have been received by, should have been received by the municipal staff and reviewed for updates. For MDOT, there's the yearly, consolidated transportation plan, or the CTP tour and pre-tour, and the pre-tour, which staff attends, will be, is scheduled for Monday, September 19th with MDOT, and that's to prepare for the Transportation Secretary's CTP Fall Tour Meeting with Carroll County elected officials. That's scheduled for October 13th. The Transportation Master Plan, the Planning Commission will begin reviewing those chapters in September. And the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the County Department of Public Works, Public Safety has finally met with all the municipalities and reviewed the HFP with everyone, and the draft should be available in the next month or two. And that's everything that we have. Are there any questions?
Other than the transportation, when you meet with the state on that, is there any way to get a list of how the priorities are listed?
There is a draft that's going to be available online September 1st through MDOT.
Okay.
So on their website, the draft link to the 2023 to 2028 Consolidated Transportation Plan will be posted, and it is in the notes there, but on the m dot dot Maryland dot gov website, as soon as it becomes available on, it says normally September 1st.
September 1st. Okay, so are we number 49, or we don't even list?
That is not my CTP, so I couldn't tell you by MDOT.
We are not on the list.
I'm afraid you were going to say that.
We, we attend every year. I think there was one year, a couple of years ago, that we didn't get a notification, but generally, we attend every year. I attend the pre-tour. That's when we go, and we basically deal with our counterparts in State Highway and other areas in MDOT. And we say, well, I can tell you that our mayor is going to ask this. So we give them the opportunity to kind of do their homework and prep the secretary on, you know, questions that are likely to come up during the actual tour, when the elected officials meet and discuss things. So we bring up Hantron Boulevard, the bypass, every year. We are hoping at some point that the county will return us to their priority transportation list, even after the state dropped it. We did stay on the letter for a couple of years, but after, after a while, eventually we got dropped, so. So yeah, so we, we attend, we put our plug in, you know, at the pre-tour, and then the mayor attends the tour, and he speaks up when, when the time's right, and we just keep, try to keep it on the radar screen.
Long as we keep it in front of someone.
And, and the, the county is working on the Transportation Master Plan currently as well, and we have met, it's been some months, and I know this is a major undertaking, but you know, there was some discussion about the road at that point, and you know, some suggestions came back from the county side about maybe some interim routes that could, you know, be a shorter route, maybe to get things started. We don't know at this point what may or may not make it into the Transportation Master Plan, but we did give our input.
Every now and then, I feel George tapping me on the shoulder, so I want to keep bringing it up.
Yeah.
This is Tara Stancik again. I'm sorry, I'm Tara Stancik, just providing my name again, per the rules. So I just have a question, I don't know if that can be answered. So did we, did we already submit, or do we, so I'm guessing it sounds like we've already asked the county if we can, you know, try to start back up that bypass and have it on our, and have it on their, what do we call it, the?
It'll be their priority letter.
Oh, their priority letter? So did that already happen?
We'll be asking again in September and October.
Oh, okay, so we still have time?
It's an annual event.
Yes.
So we haven't been denied yet?
Not this year.
I'm making sure as a resident, so then I can like pay attention.
I don't know if denial is the word. I don't know if we're on the list, or where we're at.
Oh, okay.
Even if we're being considered at this point, but it's an annual.
Annual ask.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to make sure, because I want to keep it on my radar.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
You'll be my age, Tom, something happens. All right.
Just one second, Chris Hillman, Georgia's on your, I offer a free room night to any state or county governmental authority that wants to come and stay at my inn and hear the trucks rumble by every night.
Perfect.
A free room night and dinner to anyone who wants it. It's right here on the table.
Should do a walk down Main Street, too.
Yeah.
A certain time of day.
Yeah. Come here at 5 o'clock, walk around downtown, try to, try to pull out of George Street, right? And spend the night at my place and listen to the trucks rumble by, and then talk about whether or not we need a bypass.
Right, put them in that front room.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you. Was there any questions for the county? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany.
All right. Okay, other discussions. Daryl or Jim, you want to lead into the?
If we're doing them in order, discussion on, excuse me, on equivalent front yards.
Is that in here? No.
I didn't see.
Okay, that's the second item.
That's the second one.
The discussion on urban mix.
Urban mix.
Urban mix.
Yeah, I got two urban mixes and a, I don't know, here's.
Are you going off, Jim, are you going off the, the agenda?
You don't want them.
Oh, you want the urban mix to be discussed?
No, I get what you're saying.
Go ahead.
Okay, so urban mix, Jim drafted the beautiful, multiple colored document, if I didn't give it to you, the black and white. So Jim, you want to discuss it a little bit?
Sure. This really is just to help get the conversation started. This is a little bit of a Frankenstein, cut and paste from bits and pieces of other zoning districts within the county and, and within the town, and I think I might have borrowed something from the county code as well. So basically, the idea would be a variety of dwelling types, and then some non-residential uses that fall into properties of a cultural, civic, educational, or community service type, non-residential use. And those are enumerated in the Downtown Business District Code already. So this could allow some non-residential uses, but kind of getting back to that discussion of not wanting to suck out what life there is in Main Street elsewhere, we didn't want to include, you know, retail or food service or anything like that in the urban mix, because it's adjacent to the Main Street area or the Downtown Business District. So the idea was to, you know, allow some variety, but not to really compete head-on with the Downtown District, but really to put more residents right next door to Downtown, you know, in a variety of housing types, and maybe, you know, that new population can help support the Downtown. And also, it's an area where there's, would be minimal, I would expect a minimal amount of new infrastructure, and depending upon the development type, you know, perhaps even some privately owned infrastructure that could be maintained by an association, like we see in some communities. So really, this is just kind of out there for you guys to, to tear apart, get some ideas going. The red text on here are questions, you know, or clarification, like when somebody talks about a duplex, people typically think of a side-by-side house. To us, to our code, a duplex is one dwelling above the other, and a semi-detached is a side-by-side house. So I wanted to clarify that in the definitions, I guess, or the list of housing types. And the other red text is, you know, some questions about, you know, what kind of setbacks do you want? You know, do you want a situation where you have, you know, if this is going to be an area with some higher-than-average density for the city, much as the community village overlay attempts to minimize the visual clutter of parked cars, should this district do something like that? Should there be a build-to line? So it forces people to put their cars in the garage, if it's a garage unit, or things like that. You know, just some things to contemplate, you know, with, with a higher density, you're not going to have the same amount of road frontage per dwelling, probably. So on-street parking could be an issue, you know, do you set something up where you allow a development to have a parking lot, you know, maybe on the interior? So it's, you know, buffered from the view of the public, but there's adequate parking, you know, for all the dwellings there, but maybe not per each lot. So we've seen different attempts at that through town, some have not been successful. So those are just some questions that I had, things that we can talk about or contemplate. You know, I threw some numbers in here as potential setbacks, but you know, again, the, the setbacks are going to kind of dictate how an area develops, what it looks like, and how it functions as far as, you know, parking also. Building height, typically, we allow 35 feet in most residential districts and in the Downtown District. Should that go up a little bit? If you build a townhouse with a garage on the ground floor, you're typically going to be looking at a three-story structure, and 35 feet really limits the pitch of the roof. We've seen some renderings on townhomes that were proposed and never built in the city that were very attractive and had, you know, were more a three-and-a-half story that had dormers and steep pitched roofs, or steep, more steeply pitched roofs. So you know, an extra five feet might give some more design options to, to a builder or developer. So again, just things to think about, you know, and some of this is, having seen how Meads Crossing developed, and, and you know, as I said before, that didn't play out to meet all of the community village criteria to a T. I think it will be a nice community, you know, but it has a different feel, and, you know, and it may not have the look it was originally envisioned to have. You know, and, you know, I've toured the townhouses there, they're very nice, you know, but not what was expected originally. So you know, building height can give some design options. Last thing that I had some, wanted to really throw out for, you know, thought was, was parking. You know, with, with, with a higher density comes more parking pressure. You know, and, and if you require three off-street parking spaces per dwelling, you're kind of dictating a certain sized lot as a result of that. Thus, the idea of, should there be a common parking area provided, maybe that meets that three spaces per dwelling, but not necessarily on-site? So just some things to contemplate, think about as we move forward with something, and I'm hoping we can get something together in time that we can attract some interest for, you know, the largest property that would be within this area that's on the market currently. There are a couple of other smaller properties that would still be within this district, so it's not entirely a moot exercise, but I'm hoping we can have something, something moving forward before somebody puts a self-storage on the, you know, currently zoned industrial parcel back there.
Unless somebody's prepared to make comments on this tonight, do we want to put this on next month's agenda?
Sure.
And give us time to ponder over it? Or Lee, did you have comments you wanted to make now? Either way.
For the vision of, so thank you so much for putting this out as a draft, or a straw man that we can pick apart. So are, is the vision to come to consensus and finalize in a group such as this, or is it to make recommendations, and then it goes back to city staff, and y'all try to clean it up, and then you bring it back?
So the official process is, the mayor and council will adopt zoning district regulations. The, the formal process would be, an ordinance is introduced at the mayor and council, the planning commission has the opportunity to comment on it, a public hearing is held, and then the council can adopt it. In reality, mayor and council typically like to know what you guys think before we introduce an ordinance. So I'd like to get some inputs, some feedback from this group, and then work with the mayor, make sure he's on board with, with introducing something, and, and then have that go before council and get their thoughts on the idea. Then it'll bounce back to you for official comment, once it's been introduced.
So possibly over the next three weeks, we could share our thoughts with you via email?
Absolutely.
So then that would give you a week to compile things, so then when we reconvene, we can talk about what our thoughts were, and so then those suggestions would go to the council.
And, right, and I would be happy to, you know, make this kind of a working draft, if anybody has comments or feedback to provide. You know, we can, we can do it via email, and I can sort of, you know, add comments and suggestions to it. You know, I'll make it very colorful, so we'll have, you know, different people's comments in different colors or whatever, so, you know, so we can not mush them all together. Because for all I know, you know, I might have two opposing things for the same, you know, line item. But that would be, you know, any feedback, and we can incorporate it into a new draft and get it out in the next packet.
All right, so we'll pass any information back on to you, and then put this on the agenda for next month's.
And then again, when we're talking about the urban mix area, this is property that's sort of bordered by, more or less three sides by the Downtown Business District. sort of bordered by, more or less, three sides by the Downtown Business District on the... Let's see, I get basically the southwest side of Main Street here. So, kind of bordered by properties that front Frederick Street and down to the police station and then East Baltimore Street. So, the Downtown Business District is basically one property deep in that kind of inverted U shape when you look at the map. So, this is that industrial area that sort of nestles up right behind Main Street.
Is the preference to do this via email and you then add? Or are we looking like at an interactive Google Doc? We can all just put comments on the fly in one place? Or is that we can talk some other time? I mean, I don't know.
Google Doc's a good idea.
Okay. I mean, it would definitely be easier for you to see it all in one place rather than trying to compile emails from everybody.
Okay. We'll make that available that way and get the info out on how to access it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
One thing I'm wondering from this description, obviously, this applies, Jim, to a particular zone. But what I hear you saying is that there are things in those suggestions that might benefit applying those in areas outside that zone in terms of what you... We talked about the architectural flexibility. So, what I'm wondering is, is it possible to look at that from a particular zone, but also pull things from that, those suggestions that might be applicable in other applications? So, it's not just such a, let's say, black and white, place-related design solution? So, what if someone develops outside the city, but 35 feet makes sense based on topography or design elements? Were there things in what he's describing that would benefit in other design opportunities? So, that's my question.
35 feet comes in play basically with the fire service as far as the ladder truck. So, that's an issue that we...
That was just one example.
Yeah.
Maybe there are other things in that town that would give flexibility to the town and to developers for more creativity and solutions to problems of parking setbacks and things like that that have already been in town that might be helpful.
Yeah, agreed.
Jim, I did think about that, but then again, I also thought that that standard's been in place long before residential sprinklers were required.
You're right.
So, I thought that might have been, you know, a little opportunity for a little more flexibility.
All right. Moving on to, I guess, the front yard setbacks.
So, in your...
A little history on that a little bit back.
Sure. That's what I was going to do. So, in your zoning, your packets, yard exceptions. We've had some challenges. We've had some challenges over the years with respect to fencing, mostly. And with a corner lot, you have two front yards. You have your front yard and you have your other front yard. And typically, those two setbacks are the same from curb to face of dwelling. In the case of fences, you're not allowed any eight-foot fence in front yards. You can go with, you know, four feet, but you can't go with six-foot fences, rather. So, that creates a challenge because, you know, people feel they've lost their privacy with a four-foot fence that has a six-foot fence. And it happens a lot. So, Jim's going to add more to that, but basically, now, there's a rule that the zoning administrator, once the request for a six-foot fence comes in, the all contiguous neighbors are contacted by way of certified mail. And if no one opposes that in writing to my office in 15 days, I can grant a variance of the 30%. So, call it with a 35-foot setback, I can... That variance can be given by my office in the city, rather, to about 11 and 1/2 feet back from the edge. So, that's... Is that enough? Is that what we want? You know, is it an old rule? You know, many, you know, there's a... It's important for, you know, for sight distance when you're coming to an intersection, but I think that a lot of people have thought that that's too much or at least something to be thought about, to be reconsidered. But what is the amount? If it's not 30%, what should it be? Should it be, you know, 40? Should it be 50? And then, we're going to do this. Jim, what's your thoughts on this?
So, something else to consider is, so this section of the code, this before you, 20528D, section D, I believe, was... We added that in 2008. And the issue was, we started denying applications for six-foot tall fences and sheds in the equivalent front yard because the code regarding fences says, you know, no fence higher than four feet shall be allowed in a front yard. And it also, for sheds or accessory buildings, it says that they're not allowed in a front yard. So, the way the code is worded in several of the districts, actually, most of the residential districts, you know, you've got this equivalent front yard. That tells, you know, us that we need to treat it like a double front yard, front yard on both, you know, both streets. So, that can be when the houses are set, basically, and most of the distances are 35 feet from the street. So, when the house is set 35 feet in from both streets, and if you can picture, you know, that's where the limits of your privacy fence are, and you've got a big dog that can jump over your four-foot fence, your backyard that you can fence in is pretty limited. And you've got this, you know, 35-foot by 60-foot area that you can't enclose with your privacy fence or you can't put your shed there. So, in 2006, we felt like, you know, we could offer some relief, but we were also concerned about the aesthetics of it and, you know, if neighbors might object. So, if, you know, if I'm driving down the street and, you know, all the houses are set back 35 feet from the side, including the one on the corner, but then the one on the corner has a six-foot privacy fence that comes all the way out to the sidewalk, well, the neighbors might not like that. You know, so we came up with, we sent certified letters around to all the neighbors, all the contiguous neighbors. If nobody objects, we can grant a 30% reduction. It gets them a little bit, not a lot. And some folks have been happy with that. They have to wait, you know, have to wait two weeks, like Daryl said. But it's a lot of extra work and time, and the applicant pays for the cost of the certified letters and stuff, but not for the additional time it takes. So, maybe that equivalent front yard could be something smaller when it comes to an accessory building or a privacy fence. I think that the houses should continue to stay, you know, at that same setback distance so that you kind of maintain the rhythm of the street and you don't have, like, the house on the corner sticking out, you know, way closer to the road than the rest of the houses on the block. But when it comes to being able to do a six-foot fence or maybe a, you know, a storage shed, should that equivalent front yard maybe be half of the distance or, you know, a third of the distance so that they don't have to go through that exception process? So, those are... And we've had issues with... Unfortunately, there are times that folks will call Carroll County and ask if they need a fence permit to put up a fence. And if the person on the other end doesn't ask if they're in a municipality, to be able to refer them to us, you know, they'll say, "Oh, I called the county and they said I didn't need a permit," or "I didn't need a," you know, whatever. And then, boom, a six-foot fence goes up next to the sidewalk on the side yard, and then we're in a position of, you know, trying to make them take it down or move it back. Sometimes it is harder than others to make that happen. But we have a current case that came to the attention of some council members. And, you know, so we had conversation about, you know, maybe we should make it a little bit easier on the homeowners. So, like to get some thoughts on, you know, what that might look like, how you guys feel about fences, you know, being closer to the road, maybe on corner lots than they're allowed now, at least taller fences. You can do a four-foot fence pretty much anyplace on your property, per city code. Not, your HOA might not allow it, but, you know, per city code, you can put a four-foot fence right out to the sidewalk, you know, all the way around your house. You just can't do a six-foot fence. And that's what a lot of folks like.
May you in confidence share some exemplars from Tony Town, like addresses? Like, send us an email? Is that a breach of anything so that we could get a vibe or see, okay, there's a six-foot that maybe was a third or, you know, any variations along those lines? Might need to ponder.
Dad, I...
I'm just posing the question. If it can't happen, it can't happen. But I'm just looking for exemplars.
We typically don't... Technically, you know, if somebody put in a Public Information Act request, we would have to give that information. But typically, we don't divulge properties with violations publicly. And of course, anything we email to you guys is discoverable and everything, so I would...
What's other towns doing? Other towns? What's the other towns doing for setbacks or corner lots? You know, there's a lot of developments going on in all the towns, small towns.
Well, your question will make us look, but, you know, it's... A lot of times, like Jim had said here a couple, a month ago, R and D, research and duplicate, a lot of times, you know, your code in Hampstead is the same as it is in Manchester as it is in Tony Town because they've adopted and/or amended what Carroll County's done. So, I don't know that in this case, but it's a lot of the case. From years being on the council, that's sort of what we do. So, but like, just perhaps where you see a fence in the side yard, you know, just sort of, you know, stop and look, you know, it's free, it's fun, not really, but it's free. And just look at what's there. Just know that in those side yards, no six-foot fences. You know, then look inside that fence that's there right now that does have a four-foot fence and you see a pool or a deck. Then the privacy is not the same as with a six-foot fence. So, right now, 30% can be granted by sending out the letters and no negative response in writing in 15 days, which is, you know, which fits most people right now because you're not getting a fence in two weeks, two months, whatever.
The setback's from the curb, not from the sidewalk.
It's from the property line.
From the property line, not the curb.
So, the... In most neighborhoods, the property line starts at the... Where the mountable curve, curb starts to curve down is usually where the property line is. In Meats Crossing, the curbs are a little bit more clear because they're more angular instead of curved. So, in Meats Crossing, it's at the top of the angle where it flattens off is where the property line is supposed to be. There are a couple, I mean, older parts of town, it might be the back of the curb, it might be the face of the curb. Creekside is a little weird. That's like the only relatively modern community where the property line is actually... The owners ended up owning the curb and gutter, which is unusual. So, but, so it varies around town, but usually it's at the top of the roll curb is where we would start measuring back.
So, the location of the sidewalk has no bearing on the measurement?
No.
Okay.
And we're just talking about increasing the percent, right? So, we're still doing the 15 days and the people being notified, the neighbors and everything?
And that's kind of up for discussion, too. You know, if we could, we could give, you know, things like fences or sheds a little bit of leeway without that process, but maybe if they want to go farther, we do the process. You know, so maybe by right, that equivalent front yard is only, you know, half as big instead of, you know, 35 feet, it's 17 feet from the curb. So, you would still have maybe a six-foot fence sticking out farther than everybody else's, but, you know, only 17 feet farther instead of 35. So, I... Those are just, you know, and really, it's something kind of to take a look at and try to picture as you, you know, are around town. There are some older fences scattered around town, and I think we've... I know I allowed a fence to be replaced, you know, on a property that had a six-foot fence around an in-ground pool. And there was like really no other... It was a situation where it couldn't be backed, you know, backed away from the road very much. And, you know, we allowed it to be replaced where the existing fence was. So, over the years, different zoning administrators have, you know, overlooked that or interpreted it differently. But for the last, you know, since, I don't know, 2005, 2006, that's been how we've looked at it. And, you know, this code amendment in 2008 kind of recognized that and said, well, you know, maybe we can have some relief for the homeowners so they don't have to, you know, try to go to the Board of Appeals or anything like that with it.
So, the way it stands now, can you put a six-foot fence alongside but not past the front of the house, right or wrong?
So, on a, in the middle of the block, you can, but not on a corner.
On a corner lot, you can't go past the front of the house.
Typically. I mean, the houses aren't always right at 35 feet. Sometimes they're at 38 feet, so you could, you know, come a few feet off the house. But usually, the houses are pretty close to that 35-foot setback.
Do some driving around.
And, yeah. The R-7500 district is a little different, the way the code's worded. It says on one of the streets. And so, in the R-7500 district, which is the older, largely the older part of the city, it's a...
Cloverberry.
Cloverberry, Carnival Drive, Grand Drive, East Baltimore Street is mostly R-75, although there's not a lot of corners there, I guess. But, you know, I think in the townhome areas, there's probably some corner lots that have tall fences, just to kind of see, you know, what it looks like from the street perspective and the sidewalk perspective. So, something to think about and, you know, consider when we get together next month.
Okay. Discussion on restricted general business district regulations. Talk a little bit about that.
So, the mayor brought this one up as we were talking about some other zoning issues last month. The mayor tasked us with trying to get some ideas going on this particular district. This is the district where the presentation for Belize Moos was there in the restricted general business district. It runs from the building that most of us know as the former JR LaFavor Construction Office and the Barnes Drager Insurance on East Baltimore Street. So, it runs from the end of Merwin Drive at East Baltimore up to Fair Ground at East Baltimore. So, the district was kind of created as a buffer between the more intense commercial uses and the residential area. And it was essentially done years ago in response to property owner requests where, you know, there was desire to locate offices and things like that on the Main Street more so than dwellings. And so, this district was created and kind of envisioned as allowing, giving the property owners the ability to convert their residential buildings to commercial with some limitations, you know, targeting smaller businesses that wouldn't generate a lot of vehicular traffic and things like that. It has proven challenging over the years because people see business and they want to put a drive-through there or they want to put something big there. And we say, well, no, that's the general business district then. And, you know, there's acres and acres of general business available, too. But for this property, you can't do that. And people don't like to hear no. And, you know, so we've received some, you know, say, criticism, you know, from some of the property owners that feel like the zoning is restricting them too much, you know, for marketing the properties and things like that. So, that's kind of where we are. So that's kind of where we are. And while I think years ago, there was an idea that maybe this district could be employed in additional places to kind of create a buffer so we don't have a convenience store open up right next to a house, where we do have areas where the general business district abuts a residential district. We never did use this zone anyplace other than the original block that it was created for.
Would it make sense to maybe expand the special exceptions by the Board of Appeals on it? Maybe add in more businesses that can go before the Board of Appeals in this district? If that makes sense, just so basically, we can make sure that it makes sense to put something like that in that district.
Why not eliminate the restricted?
Yeah.
Because we're talking about from Fairground Avenue to Merwin Avenue. And with the LaFavor property, it'll be turned into a business, a different business. So you take it from one corner to another corner, make it just plain general business because you've got general business right across the street. You've got the bank and Verizon and Ollie Glasses Place, all that. So if you look at what is allowed in each one of those, wouldn't it be more illogical to remove the restricted and make it all part of general business from that one corner to the next corner?
If that's the, you know, where the commission thinks the next WABA or, you know, Arby's should go, that would make sense, so.
I think the, expanding the special exception would just give the residents in the area a little bit more say so they can come voice their concerns as to, if something, a little misfitting is going there, they can come to the Board of Appeals, you know, when they do the Board of Appeals for the special exception and voice their concerns for it there.
But if there's a restriction saying that that particular, they're still limited. I see what you're saying, but if it's not allowed, regardless, it's not allowed.
So the amazing thing...
Right, Lee?
We're having the conversation is, you know, should there be special exceptions that can be heard by the Board of Appeals?
Yeah.
You know, now the code, and a little background for everybody who... So prior to Antrim Mini Storage on Antrim Boulevard, the Board of Appeals had a lot more latitude in what they could allow as a special exception use. And that was an example of that self-storage was allowed by special exception in general business. And even though the intent was for there to be a shopping center in the front and storage in the rear originally, there was kind of a response against that decision. And the Board of Appeals was kind of stripped of that latitude, that flexibility to, you know, allow other, I think it might have said, similar uses. So it was very broad, and it allowed an applicant to come in and say, "Well, here's how my business is similar to this other business in the general business district." And if they could convince the board, they could get a special exception. After that storage site was approved, the code was modified to take, to give them very specific things they could approve as a special exception, and it took a lot of flexibility from the board. And so over the years, I think we've kind of eased back a little bit from that. But at any rate, you know, we certainly could entertain having, you know, a, you know, similar businesses listed in here or some special exception uses that could be, you know, either enumerated or, you know, by special exception, you can have a business that falls within these criteria or something like that. So, you know, and that, there would be a public process where the neighbors could all come and, you know, state their concerns. You know, the applicant would have a chance to address the concerns or, you know, but there'd be a process, you know, a public process involved.
Plus, these properties that we're talking about, they could be a business or dwelling by way of a permit. It could be a business today, a dwelling tomorrow. So that's, if they were not, like a Belisimo, the lot behind it, that's not the case.
Correct, on that lot.
Right, so that's something that may have been an oversight back in 2000, when, 2000... Oh, no, maybe 1999?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think at the time, it was believed that there was going to be this great pressure to convert all these houses to office-type uses. And, you know, it was probably 10 years before anything other than the one property that prompted all this converted, that one being the insurance office. Yeah, so, but when we created this district, we didn't allow single-family dwellings to be in it. Maybe that's the best and highest use for the derelict store that won't sell. I don't know. So, you know, that could be a quick fix, too. Could just be, oh, you know what? Maybe houses there aren't so bad after all, and we could allow houses again.
Well, we've got three, four houses there...
Right.
...that are residents right now. And are we creating a hardship on those folks not being able to sell their property?
So wherever there's a, wherever there's an existing house, it's considered a permitted use in the district. The issue that Darrell mentioned with the second lot of what used to be the LaFavor property, that's the Defatta property now, or I forgot their LLC name, but, you know, that lot doesn't have a dwelling on it and never did. So that lot would be a problem if somebody did want to put a house on it. If somebody wanted to tear down what used to be Buzzy Bear's store and put a house on it, that would be a problem because it never had a house. Any of the other properties that do have a house, or say, the insurance office decided they needed a bigger space, that could be converted back to a house. The property Belisimoes is talking about could be converted back to a house because it had been a dwelling previously. So pretty much in the code, wherever there was a house, you can always have a house on that lot.
People are talking about, they're concerned about when they're ready to sell that house. They don't want to sell it as a residence. So what options do they have?
So people on that lot could sell it as a house or any of these uses, right? But if they want to sell it...
What you suggested is kind of best idea.
I think it just allows public opinion on the matter.
Yeah, and then allow the Board of Appeals to have more options. Lee, you were on the Board of Appeals, were you?
That's true, what you're saying. It would be more options.
Okay.
So is that something we should ponder on to next month?
Well, we can explore different ways that we could, you know, add a special exception process to that district.
Would that be just a wording change, or does that have to go through a full process?
I mean, it would still be a text amendment for zoning code, so it would still be a public hearing and everything like that. But, you know, it would be more an addition to, you know, what's already in there. So, you know, we could maybe come up either with a criteria that, you know, the board could entertain, or maybe a short list, but say that it's not, you know, an all-inclusive list or something like that, but by, you know, way of example. Okay.
Agreeable, everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate the participation. We're getting there. All right. Oh, we're getting close to the end. We'll go around the table. Go.
For me tonight?
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everyone or anyone get the Maryland Planning Conference invite for October 25th and 26th?
I'm glad you brought that up.
I would like to go to, it's in Frederick this year, so it's...
Is that fine?
Pardon me?
Is that fine?
No, it's not. It's not an overnight stay to drive back and forth. But there's usually, there are usually good things to go to.
Yeah, I think the preliminary agenda looks really good this year, so.
Okay, so I guess can we let you guys know so you guys can put registration in? People want to go for that?
Send me the invite, by the way.
Pardon me?
I think I saw one a few months ago, but I haven't seen anything.
We just got an update with the whole agenda.
Oh, good. Yeah, just let me know.
Yeah, just got it about two days ago, so good.
I'll make sure you have it if you didn't get it.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like the next one will be September 26th, the next meeting. Is that okay with everyone?
No.
All right. Is there anyone from the floor who'd like to make some comments before adjournment? Chris, was that a yes or no?
Uh, not really, I'm out of it.
Okay, then I'll take it as a no. Jim or Darrell, anything?
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
A second.
All in his favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.